Welcome everyone to the April 9th Planning Board meeting. First order of business, I'd like to welcome Jessica Montgomery, our new Planning Board Clerk. Thank you very much for signing up. My condolences. As we always start, we review the meeting minutes from the last meeting, in this case, the 12th of March, where we, as always, pay bills. We acted on three different resolutions, two extension resolutions for SH-29 West Neck and the White Roadway bomb, and one wetlands application for Flower at 10 Cheekwood Avenue. We opened the Elliott Bowesman Lot Line Modification for 10A South Midway Road, 8A Joy Drive, and we've adjourned it to continue this evening. Does anyone have any questions? You guys have any comments about the meeting minutes? The last one?
No, it's good.
It's good.
It's good. So I make a motion to accept the March 12th meeting minutes. So I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have two invoices from the Times Review Media Group for public hearing notices that we are holding tonight. They total $135.87. The first is for... Now, they don't write the individual breakdowns.
One's Beagleman.
One's for the Beagleman Wetlands Application, the other's for the English Virtue Application. These are required by code. So I make a motion to accept the Times Review Media Group notices in the amount of $135.87. Do I have a second?
Second.
It says 84 cents on the minutes.
87 here.
So 87 is right now.
84.
Need to update the minutes?
Four and three is seven.
But cool.
Eight.
I second.
Yeah, so now. All in favor? It's the minutest.
Yes, definitely.
Sorry, I've been doing tasks.
Me too.
The next one I have is for EHA, for Professional Services rendered in the March of 2024 in the amount of $2,270.62. And this is for putting together the two draft resolutions, finalizing the 10 Cheekwood Avenue Resolution, and attending our meeting via Zoom. There was also review of road abandonment documents and deeds that we were requested to look at. And that's basically it. Oh, and preparing the public notices for this evening. Total of 8.7 hours. As always, money very well worth spent. So I make a motion to accept the EHA invoice for March in the amount of $2,270.62. All in favor? All in favor? We have two invoices from the Rayner Group. One, both for the month of March. One is for subdivision site plan review in the amount of $505. And the other one is for wetlands permits in the amount of $1,618.75, totaling $2,123.75. Regarding the subdivision invoice, most of the work was done on the Elliott Bowesman Lot Line Modification and the new Radigan Lot Line Modification that we received, and we'll be discussing later. Regarding wetlands permits, it's work on the English Virtue, Dunn, Beagleman, and Ward Point Holdings wetland applications. Very helpful for us. So I make a motion to accept the Rayner Group's invoices totaling $2,123.75 for the month of March.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We have no resolutions to review and act. We do have three public hearings. So we started with the Elliott Bowesman Lot Line Modification last month. And let's continue it now, all parties are ready.
Good evening. Matt Sherman, Sherman Engineering Consulting. I'm here on behalf of Andrew and Melissa Elliott and Joy Bowesman. My apologies about last month. We thought that we were all on the same page moving into this and found out a couple of days prior to the hearing if we were not. So it took us a little bit of time to get everybody lined up. This application is really straightforward. It's a lot line change between two properties. We're basically taking a 25,887 square feet from the Elliott property and transferring it to the Bowesman property. It results in both properties being just over an acre to acre and a quarter. So it actually rectifies an old non-performity. The trick on this one is that the lot line changing and all of the lot configuration work had been done at some point in the past. So we didn't know that this was an issue until the Elliott's went to the Health Department to get a permit to upgrade their septic system. They said that the current tax map didn't match their maps on file, which then led us down the path, which brings us to you for approval of the final lot line change map. Once we get approval from you guys, then we'll also have to get an approval from the Health Department for the same.
Karen Hoog is here representing the Joy Bowesman. Karen, do you have any comments?
I have no comments. I've talked to my clients. We've talked to the Health Department, and we've provided Matt with the signature pages he needed for the application.
Okay, great. So everyone's back on board?
Yes.
We've been talking about this for a few months, I think. So I think we have mostly, we have Joe's comments, two on it.
He had had some mapping issues that we had taken care of.
Which he rectified. Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Anyone on Zoom have any questions or comments? If that's the case, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing for Elliott and Bowesman. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, the first of the two wetlands public hearings is for the Beagleman Holding. And I'll read the public notice. Notice hereby given that the Shelter Island Town Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM prevailing time on April 9th, 2024 in Shelter Island Town Hall, Shelter Island, New York, at which time all interested parties shall be heard regarding the application of Beagleman Holding LLC for permit to construct new waterside deck 98.1 feet from mean high water with two square feet in adjacent regulated area for the construction and expansion outside footprint of a new patio and stairs at swimming pool with expansion seaward, holding a 90-foot setback from mean high water at 228 square feet in adjacent regulated area. Replace existing treads, risers, and railings on existing stairs to bulkhead in vegetative buffer. New coping and construction of existing swimming pool within footprint of adjacent regulated area. Regating area in vegetative buffer and adjacent regulated area. Demolish 104 square feet steps in vegetative buffer and adjacent regulated area. New stone walkway in adjacent regulated area and fence in vegetative buffer of lands reportedly owned by them located in the AA nearshore overlay, Sinister District, residential district. The property which is the subject of the application is located at 85 Ram Island Drive, Shelter Island, New York, which parcels are identified on the Suffolk County tax map as parcel number 70925. The subject application is available for review at the Office of Shelter Island Planning Board on the Planning Board website. We have comments from the Conservation Advisory Council. One, they asked to submit calculations for mean high water determination versus wetlands 129-4A1. Two, coordinate information indicated on V101 with C1, both designated as proposed site plans. Three, submit irrigation permit indicating extensive drip line installation and location of cistern. Would anyone like to speak to this application?
Evening again. Matthew Sherman, Sherman Engineering Consulting. My clients, Dan Zamlog and Kami Cruz are online. They're available by Zoom if we have any questions for them. The notice does a pretty good job of summarizing this application. It's this project, or this, excuse me, this property is on Little Ram out facing Warner's Bay. There is an existing dwelling that has recently been reconstructed on site. Other site improvements that are outside of the regulated area, so they weren't included in this application. That includes the septic system. It includes a supply well, other site improvements. One of the things that came up as we were going through the review of this application was the CAC's comments. And their comments on asking us to basically confirm mean high water. We had used what was on the survey of the high water line, which is coincident with about a four-foot contour when they did this survey. Mean high water is typically at about a one-foot contour, one foot plus or minus. So our separation distances here and our wetland setbacks are much more conservative than mean high water. So we're landward of where that would be. So the coverage that we've got here, the stairs pretty much stay the same because they're all going down the bluff. But the pool and the patio, where we've got 77 square feet of the pool within the regulated area, that is a very, very conservative number. The pool may actually be outside of the regulated area if we push back to, if we measure from mean high water as opposed to high water that was located by the surveyor. I've got a revised site plan here that I can provide you so you can see exactly what it is I'm talking about. I don't have the new calculations because we still want to hold to the high water line that was surveyed by John Minto. But it just gives you a clarification on the wetlands boundary as determined by Sean Barron. What happened is after the CAC meeting, we had Sean go out and look. We had known that mean high water was going to be the wetlands boundary just by knowing the site, and it's a grass beach, so there's really no other option. So Sean went out and looked at it. He confirmed that. And that's when he brought it to our attention that mean high water was going to be a little bit seaward of where we were measuring it from at that four-foot contour. So in essence, it doesn't change the project at all. It doesn't change the coverages or anything like that. What it does do is where we are currently 95.6 feet from high water to the edge of the pool coping, if we went to mean high water, it would be more than 95.6 feet. So it doesn't have a, it doesn't have a negative impact on the application at all. It doesn't change the vegetation plan. It doesn't change anything else. And for the other comments from the CAC, the irrigation permit, we do have an irrigation permit. We do have a cistern. It's on file with the Building Department. It was issued January of this year and permit number 20230738. And then the last comment, which is really the only one of any substance, was looking at the combining of the vegetation plan with my site plan. I really, if the board wants us to do that, we certainly can. It's not unusual to have multiple site plans for different components of the project, mainly to not confuse things. I do reference the vegetation plan on my site plan. So if this, this site plan that revised on April 4th were to be one that the board considers and approves, it does have the reference directly back to that vegetation plan.
You received Joe's memo, right?
Yeah.
There are components that are below the coastal erosion hazard line. Are you going back to the DEC for permits on those?
No, we don't need to because they're not new. We're reconstructing the stairs. That's all we're doing. That's the only thing that's below the coastal erosion hazard line.
There is a whole bunch of regrading that was pulled out for, or has that been removed?
That's not, those aren't structures. Coastal erosion hazard is for structures.
It's also, as far as I understand, the serving of the ground of regrading. Joe, and/or Beth, I see you're both here. What is your understanding about the permit if, for work seaward of the coastal erosion line?
My understanding is that it's structural.
The structures?
Yes.
And I believe that regrading was on our approved DEC permit.
I'm gonna see. Because they left, they issued you a LNJ.
For the, for the structures. Because the LNJ is based on the bulkhead. But, and that's only for structures, that coastal erosion hazard line doesn't care about bulkheads, doesn't care about elevation or anything like that. So anything that's landward of the bulkhead is outside of their jurisdiction. Any structures that are seaward of the coastal erosion line, it kicked back into their jurisdiction. And actually, that's one of the reasons why the deck on that, what's that, north corner? The deck kind of cuts and goes parallel to the wetlands offset because that there too is right in line with the coastal erosion hazard line. So rather than, we asked if we could cantilever the deck over the coastal erosion hazard line, and they said, no, we could not. So that's one of the reasons why we kicked that back was so that we didn't have to run afoul of that regulation.
You didn't submit the plan. They, they didn't, did they stamp the site plan that you submitted and got the LNJ from, or no?
Not the LNJ.
Because you didn't get a permit from, right?
Let me see, because I don't think we got a stamped plan for the LNJ. Let me check. Yeah, no, we did not get a stamped plan for the LNJ. But they do reference the site plan.
Okay.
Do you mind submitting a copy of that? Yeah, we can do that.
David, you went to the site today.
Yeah, Marcus and I went to the site. I think the only question I have is sort of on the pool. And because it's already been done, basically, the works are already there, what the original was like. So I wanted to do a comparison, which I've not done yet, which is go look at the past pictures, which is going to be hard to tell, but just to make sure that it hasn't extended over. It doesn't appear to be.
We have an existing survey, right? And you compared it with the new.
Yeah, and it seemed like it was fine.
It's right on top.
Yeah, that was the only thing I was somewhat concerned about because it has, the new one, that's where actually the cover is going, right?
Right, there is, and you can actually see in the pictures that were submitted with the application. It kind of cuts off right in that spot where you can see the brick coping around the pool and a little bit of that bluestone patio that was around the brick coping. That's the area that that automatic cover you're talking about. That's the area that it'll be going into.
Yeah.
Cool. That's still within the adjacent regulator.
It's just understanding how much they're going over, expanding beyond.
The actual footprint of the patio, the footprint of the swimming pool, all that remains the same. It gets just refurbished, basically. The only thing that really changes is there's stairs going down to the side, going down to the north. Those change in configuration. It stretches out a little bit more, but it's in essence the same basic thing.
The stairs going down to the beach, you're just redecking and putting new risers. The structure sound?
Yeah.
The poster sound?
Ideally, I'd like to replace the whole thing, but I don't want to risk having, it's not in bad shape. We don't want to risk having any type of damage or any issues to the bluff because of the way that bluff is. So, you know, we looked, I looked at it, the contractor looked at it. We're all in agreement that, you know, it's, it's not brand new, but it's got plenty of life left in it.
I appreciate that effort. We are, as a board, still struggling with the concept of rebuilding in that, in the vegetative buffer, thinking about past applications and current ones going forward. And some of the determinations we've been given. Whether or not we, I agree with what we've been told. We've just applied them a certain way, so.
Well, people do have an obligation to maintain these structures. So, you know, New York State Building Code, you gotta, you gotta maintain what you've got. And the only way to maintain them is to occasionally redeck them. And so I really don't know what other option they've got.
No. What are you redecking with? Just going IP or something? Or are you going, sticking with a, you can't do CCA anymore?
Yeah, I don't know if a decision is made. And I would tap toss that to Dan who's on Zoom to see if a decision has been made as to what that material is.
Yeah, hi guys. This is Dan. Nice to meet you all. I believe we're going to use probably the same thing we're using for the main decking, which is mahogany. But I don't know if Brian, our contractor, is on. He might be able to answer it specifically, but that would, that would be the plan.
So basically a naturally rot resistant, weather resistant wood.
Would you be willing to keep the erosion control fence landward of the top of the bluff, say 10 feet or so? Is that going to cause you problems if we stipulate that?
Yeah, we wanted to keep it down so it was out of the view. That was kind of the, not the pool fence.
The erosion control fence.
Oh, for the, for control, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, 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 no problem.
The town wetlands code does not regulate fence.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we can, and really that erosion control fence, it can be, you know, 15, 20 feet from the top of the bluff. We've got plenty of room because there's not much going to be happening there. You know, we've got the regrading. Obviously, we'll have to adjust for that. But once that regrading is done, we can put it in, or, you know, any place you would like it to, yeah.
I'd like it to be 10 feet.
Sure, that's not a problem.
Protect the top of the bluff.
There's less chance of something happening.
Yeah.
Because, but with Marcus and I's visit, there was nothing else. It all kind of made sense. It was just reconstruction on base. It seemed reasonable.
Julia, Matt, any questions?
No, I just, I think we can keep the vegetation plan and cycling.
It can be so, yeah. We've done, we've had many of like that in the past.
Yeah.
As long as it refers to and references the same.
Howard, do you understand what we just said? Because the two plans reference each other.
Yeah, no, I understand. Hi, I'm Howard Johansson from Conservation Advisory Council. I just had two questions. One was, you know, for the vegetation plan. That's minor. That's correct. He had noted to go back to the vegetation plan. But I just think that both indicated as proposed site plans that we should have one, you know.
Well, I'll stamp and sign both, so they're both part of the record.
All right, that's fine. The other thing I had, and I just, I don't understand the mean high water line. We used to, like it says in the code, using vegetation. It's no vegetation.
When there's no vegetation, you go by the mean high water. And that's usually established by a surveyor, or in this case, a surveyor. And then Sean Barron's of Barron Environmental, who established the, the mean high watermark.
And how do they do that exactly? That's what my question is. Do they take the last 10 years of high water, a mean high?
So they go to the site and they usually look at debris on the beach. And you can see a high extent of debris. You usually get an understanding of low. And they make an assessment based on their, you know, understanding of how this works.
Because when I was on the beach, it's, I mean, it's just sand and rocks. It's washed pretty clean, that beach. It is. And because we don't mention it in the 129 of our wetlands code, we just mention vegetation line. And since there is none, I was just wondering.
And again, as we discussed this morning, that's usually defined by, developed, the mean high watermark is usually determined by a surveyor.
Okay, so when the surveyor does it, I just was wondering.
Within five years is what we ask.
That is surveyed within five years?
No, that the wetlands delineated, whether it's a mean high watermark or, because sands do shift on a beach.
Right.
So then that affects the line. So that's why we asked for that five-year determination.
Okay, satisfied with that. Great, thank you.
Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments? Anyone on Zoom have any questions or comments? All right, so I make a motion to... All right, Pam?
Yeah, I just have a question. So now you have a new site plan that's only five days old that no one's been able to review before this public hearing. That's what I just understood. Matt Sherman just gave you a revised site plan dated April 4th, but we've never seen this.
I can clarify what the change is, if that helps. The, we added a note based on the CAC comments, asking about the wetlands boundary. We added a note to the existing site plan that said that the wetlands boundary is equivalent to mean high water as witnessed by Sean Barron on April 4th of this, this year. So that's the change in the, in the plan. Everything else in the plan is the same.
That's not significant, Pam.
Even without it.
Okay, I know. It's just that Mr. Sherman does have a habit of, you know, stopping in on public hearings with new revised plans every once in a while. So I just wanted that clarified. It's a bad habit and it's, it's just not being transparent and not easy for us to understand what's happening with these projects. Going forward, I'd like to see a change in, in the policy of the Planning Board accepting revised site plans four days before a public hearing. And that's all.
Thank you, Pam. All right, so I make a motion to close the Beagleman Public Hearing with the exception of the submission of the site plan that was sent to the DEC. It's referenced by the DEC. A second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have another wetlands public hearing. I'll read the public notice. Notice hereby given that the Shelter Island Town Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM prevailing time on April 9th, 2024 in Shelter Island Town Hall, Shelter Island, New York, at which time all interested parties shall be heard regarding the application of Ariel, English, and Erica Jean Virtue for a permit, one, to demolish 140 square foot portion of an existing deck at west side of residence in vegetative buffer; two, reconstruction of guard and railing to remaining deck in vegetative buffer; three, to demolish an existing spa in vegetative buffer; four, to construct a new concrete pad for hot tub equipment and new hot tub with steps at west side of property within adjacent vegetative buffer. Applicant is also requesting a wetlands permit for the following structures within the vegetative buffer that were noted as activity not allowed per the notice of disapproval dated January 25th, 2024; five, construct new steps and landing totaling 38 square feet at north side of residence in vegetative buffer; six, to legalize unapproved, unpermitted 8.2-foot by 12.2-foot deck built within vegetative buffer; seven, to construct and expand landward a concrete apron located on the south side of the existing garage in vegetative buffer; and eight, the construction of a roof overhang seaward into the vegetative buffer at north side of the existing residence of lands purportedly owned by them located in the C nearshore overlay district, residential district. The property which is the subject of the application is located at 6G Hager Road, Shelter Island, New York, which parcels are identified on Suffolk County tax map as parcel number 718348. The subject application is available for review at the Office of Shelter Island Planning Board and on the Planning Board's website. We have CAC notes. The, number one, received revised proposed site plan dated 3/18/325 at 2:00 PM. Two, site plan one indicates 75 and 100-foot dimensions from high water line. 129-4A1 delineated wetlands boundary flagged by a credentialed environmentalist within fiber years of submission of the application is required. The water was up to the bulkhead, submerging the wetlands and plants. Three, site plan does not indicate foliage at the site at top of slope within the sloped area along Hager Road property line. Four, the proposed site plan by F. Michael Hammer revised... Four, the proposed site plan by F. Michael Hammer revised 11 September 23 requires updating to conform to the proposed site plan by Maxine Lau architect. Five, provide vegetative buffer at bottom of slope. Six, provide vegetation plan 129-4. Four, locate dry wells, apply for new IA septic system. Would anyone like to speak to this application?
I'm Maxine Liu, and I'm the architect for this project. And I just want to know the homeowners are here tonight as well, Harold English and Erica Virtue. And first, I'd like to say that we appreciate the review and recent comments by the Conservation Advisory Committee. And to facilitate that discussion tonight, even though it's the last minute, we submitted a revised site plan in response to some of their comments using the bulkhead instead of the mean high water line as a starting point for the setbacks for the wetlands. I submitted photos of the site and you could see the bulkhead in relation to the water's edge in the photos at the very last page, number 15 and 16. On the, and on the revised site plan, I've also shown vegetation that's on the site and named everything that was possible for me to identify. I appreciate that a revised survey would be needed, but since it's not available yet, as an interim measure, I've prepared a marked up survey, a portion of the mark, of the survey marked up to show what the approximate dimensions are likely to be when the various, the various elements of the project. And I have a handout to give you to see that. It's also, I sent it also as a PDF. So in green, you can see what the likely dimensions are gonna be. The surveyor will have to calculate it, but it's close. Okay, so give your minute to take that in. So regarding the application as a whole, I'm sure you can see that what we've done is we've offered to make a trade off between removing a portion of the existing deck and creating more, removing a portion of the existing deck in order to create a more direct access from the house to the dock and the garage areas, which is much needed by the homeowners. Then we've also discovered that a much loved and very useful portion of the deck around the house was built by the previous owner without a permit. So we're applying to legalize it as well as to upgrade the decking on it. I'd like to simplify the math regarding the changes to the deck areas because I think it could be a little complicated in the application. So here's a summary. If the area of the proposed deck and steps and the as-built deck are added together with the remaining existing deck, the total of the decks and steps will then be 409 square feet, which is 17 square feet less than the area of the existing deck now. So also, what you can see on the site plan is that we located a hot tub and we fitted in between the 75 foot setback to the wetlands, which we've revised to show in the site plan as a bulkhead, and the 35 foot setback to Hager Road. In addition, you can see this also on the proposed survey and the revised survey. There was, there was previously a gravel driveway that the homeowners had removed and replaced with grass. There was a stone border, there was never a stone wall that survey was incorrect about that. There was a stone border, isolated individual stones that was removed and it was replaced with grass and arborite. And also, there previously was a geothermal system which had, which was removed by the homeowners and it was replaced with a permitted heat pump system. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. And also, the homeowner Erica Virtue would like to speak now. Thank you. If you want to wait for Erica.
I'm Erica, I'm one of the homeowners. I just wanted to say thank you for considering the application. I have ALS and it's a neurological condition that affects my mobility. So the changes to the deck will help a lot with me being able to get down to the water and also to the garage for my operations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The one thing we've been up against in many recent applications is really permitting no expansion. The code does not allow any expansion in the vegetative buffer beyond 100 square feet. And I took that, picked up some satellite photos and that show that since progressively, the house since 2001, when the wetlands code was adopted, has progressively been enlarged and it may not be by you, much probably by the previous owner. And so we've, we've denied other applications or made them, asked them to reduce the expansion to 100 square feet. I don't know how we can get around, since we've done this now, to request this of numerous applicants, how we can ask for anything less. I know it's not your fault when you purchased the house. Did you go through a title company? They have pinpointed that they had built components without a certificate of occupancy?
We got a certificate of occupancy from the building department when we bought the house and they missed, they missed that had been built.
So just looking at the 9.2 by 12.2 previously built by other people deck, that's 100 square feet right there. And some of these additions are, just add to that.
I don't know if you noticed that the, there's a note in this approval that there was a construction, a previously approved and permitted HVAC compressors at the southwest corner was used, was determined to be the 100 square foot permission as well.
I am personally less concerned about that, since that's in the adjacent regulated area. And I'm willing to make a determination, say that add that as part of this wetland application. And what's a pad there, three feet by three, 18 square feet total, three by three each. I'm not really that concerned. That's more about the expansion.
The decking deck is within the 75.
I know you want to expand the, this covered porch, we'll call it, this design element. How, how wide is that design element, Maxine?
Overhang?
Proposed roof overhang.
Oh, well, there's no, there's no porch underneath it, it's just red.
Understood, what is the, what is the width?
I think on a, it's sort of shown as 19, oh, the width?
The width, I think you designed it.
I think the.
Four feet.
Yes, it's, it is, is the house has a, it has that kind of detail of the overhang on the other half of the house. And it was an idea to make the house look better.
Oh, I know, it unifies the house, I agree. But it is something in the denial letter that's flagged, it's not permitted in the vegetative buffer. So unfortunately, that would be an easy one to reduce the square footage, if we can come to some kind of agreement. Where is the existing hot tub on the, on these plans? None of them show the location of the existing hot tub. Yeah, my apologies.
Julie and I went and saw that.
It's up towards the front.
Yeah.
Once the driveway is removed, where will you be parking vehicles? I know Hager Road is very narrow.
It's gone, it's grass.
Oh, it's all.
It's still grass, yeah, it's really bad. It was already, Julie and I went and saw it, there's a, there's a gate, but the gate just opens into grass.
Actually, I was expecting to see a driveway or recently removed, but it was quite, it was just grass.
It was removed, okay.
I have a comment to add.
Sure, please come on. Please introduce yourself.
My name's Nelson Harker and bought our house over 40 years ago. The road itself is larger than, than the asphalt you see there. What's happened is people have been coming in and encroaching on that road, making it very dangerous, number one. Of having all of a sudden here beep beep beep, and who is it? Powerco by Harmon's truck, you can't do it two ways, you can turn around. Then, at the end, we used to have Softwood's home at the end, and they it sold to someone else and clogged, and then they said, oh, it was abandoned. It wasn't abandoned because I used to use it to visit them. So the street itself on the map is much wider than the area. People just encroached on it and made it smaller. And, you know, I've talked to Marty here about it, who's been hitting there for a long time. There's many things I see that weren't, shouldn't be there, haven't complained. But hearing that noise, people encroaching and making that road narrow when, if you go to the town of Riverhead to look at the boundary of it, it's a lot bigger.
Good.
So it's not narrow. Okay, the point is now is dangerous. You also have on 2Hager Road, the people bought, when we bought our house there, memory room, we had a water view. We almost have no water views. And we all, we're on a very high elevation, we have two lots, we're far away. And yet 2Hager, their driveway disappeared. And now they park on the street, which is a town landing. I asked them over a decade, can you fix the town landing? Now, that was very dangerous too. So you have these created dangerous area, but you're saying it's very narrow. It's not a narrow road. It gets narrower as you get near the end. It wasn't abandoned at the end, so now it became abandoned.
I think you're misunderstanding my term narrow.
No, I think this gentleman said narrow, but.
I think what I want to know is that the vehicles can park off the road. If we're parking vehicles on the shoulder off the property, then that road even gets more difficult to get past.
And that's what's happening.
That's what we're, we're, I was starting to bring up, talk about, is off-road parking for vehicles.
Yeah, and one of the things is that now we are getting a lot of commercial vehicles parked on our property there. And since everyone else is going, I might as well grow some Cleveland Cyclopses there. Since everyone else, of course, I'm getting the oil drips from these commercial vehicles because we have a lot of soft shoulder there, perhaps the most of anyone, 220 feet. Okay?
Good.
And so, you know, is it right for people to encroach on that road and create a dangerous situation, especially when you have all the folks, they have people with medical problems there? And now you may want to get an ambulance in, a police car in there, other vehicles.
The road definitely has to be maintained for emergency access. There's enough structures down there that that's required. And so that's why we're discussing, we're starting this discussion about off-road parking. I was, I'm just hearing now that this driveway's been removed.
Right, but can I just add, I mean, again, I was only there on one day.
No, we haven't heard your comments either.
What I observed was the owners were out, but there was, I believe there was one vehicle and it looked to me like it was parked in front of the one-story garage and it was clearly.
And I parked next to it.
Yeah, he parked next to it, I mean.
There's parking for, without going into the garage, it's parking for two vehicles.
Two side by side.
They actually have, they have like a smaller driveway and then this former driveway, which is now just grass. But I didn't see any vehicle on the shoulder of the road, it was definitely on their own property.
And if I'm, oh, this is called as a stone wall, it almost seems like there's a bump out for parking right in front of the house. Is, is there such a thing as a bump out for parking?
Previously, they were not, it's not wide enough. If you look where their property, they're fully parked, a wide vehicle was gonna be on the road and on their property with the fence there, number one. Number two is, we see multiple vehicles parked on the street and partially on the grass. Okay, I have complained about it, but, you know, it's starting to be annoying when the house next to these two little people, you know, you have the metal bar coming from the parking, five vehicles there now and part of it's on Hager Road, part of it's on the private road. You know, I came over like a gentleman to him and said, sometimes, you know, I have trouble backing up, you know, if I have my pickup truck here, okay? And I don't want to damage his van, or his real, his breath or anything. And it's a little troublesome, okay? But again, I don't complain about it, I come over and I'm like a gentleman, right? And even when it was the accident, I didn't want to bother them. Okay, I know that, you know, I'm not the only one who has trouble backing up a vehicle. And shouldn't you have a single family resident that has a driveway? If not a garage and a driveway? Especially where there's a boat ramp that I've asked them over 10 years ago to raise the money to repair it and fix it. And I think that is something fair that these people can expand house, expand a house, expand a house. But they can't put a little driveway in there for a couple of vehicles? And I've been there with many vehicles. And I had a hard time turning around and I had to go on someone's property to do that. I mean, that's all I wanted to say, because I wasn't even gonna even bring it up. But since recently, I went to see Marty as a neighbor, because he's been here a long time. There's things I committed that turned him here, and I haven't said a word.
Okay.
I have problems walking, okay? I have a false name, my wife has a rod with screws in her ankle. And before, when we were living somewhere not here, so we rented, people started to take a piece of slate, people started to take a four by four. So I said, okay, let me get some blue stone, put some blue stone so it looks neat. Now they call it a deck. And I get in trouble and I'm saying, hey man, I'm on grass. I supposed to guard these ogre daughter who says, no, I put brick on grass and it's okay. So I'm having a little trouble with these contradictions of being able to spend over a million and saying, I can, in that land, I can put a treehouse, I can put a swing there, but I can't, where there used to be a driveway, unable to put a driveway. You know?
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate the comments.
And I have some scarring now, just turned about one step from the blue stone that's there, it used to be slate. So instead of being slate and other mixtures of two feet by two feet, concrete pieces, you know, I figured I'd try to just beautify it. you know, I figured I'd try to just beautify it. So that's, you know, where I'm coming from. When you say to someone who ever mentioned a narrow road, it's not a narrow road when you look at the Riverhead Town Map of nineteen thirty-two. Okay? And it's not always grass. A lot of it is encroached to me.
Understood.
Difference.
Understood. Thank you very much.
I thank you very much for your time. Listen, and I wasn't prepared to talk.
Does anyone else in the audience like to, please, please state your name?
My name's Martin Kapoff. I'm Errol's and Erica's neighbor across the road. And I, I take issue with item number seven on the, the notice that was sent to all of us that I got certified mail. There's a garage there that Errol's been working on, fix it up, and it's, it's quite nice. My, my problem is, is he's come off the front of that garage, southward towards me, about two and a half, three feet past his property line and put in curbing, metal curbing and bluestone, which it looks like an item number seven is going to be replaced by concrete if that's approved.
No, it's not. The, there's just the little concrete apron in front of the garage, and that's all.
And what's the width of that concrete apron? Two feet's the standard? Four, what are you, what are you talking about?
Here on the plan.
Two feet. So they're just replacing the two-foot concrete apron.
Well, that's fine, but I have, I have a problem with the, where it is now, what he's done with it. He's into that area that Nelson was talking about. I have like two and a half feet less to make my turnarounds when I come out of my own house. So I have to make, now make a K-turn instead of just backing out.
So if I may clarify, the concrete, the concrete apron is maybe twenty feet onto their property?
No, 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 I misunderstood. But I'm not talking about the two-foot little hand that's there. I'm talking about where the bluestone comes to.
The curb where you entered the driveway from the road?
Yeah.
That's what he's referring to.
Oh, the curb on the plans.
And that's a metal curbing which is put in recently.
Okay.
So that now is my road, getting out of my property to go left and get back out into town. And that was my concern. It is, it is an issue. It's, it's coming into that same area that Nelson was talking about where it's, it's actually not his land.
On the wetland?
It's into a, it's like a, I don't know, a right-of-way, I guess you'd call it.
Yeah, it's in the right-of-way.
The, yeah, it's, it's metal edging. If it's an issue, we can, we can remove that portion of it, there's no problem.
It's not, it's not a part of the wetland code. It's unrelated to the outside of wetlands.
So it's not in our purview.
Not in our purview.
That's more of a community kind of thing.
But I have to adopt, just remove, that issue. I apologize, I apologize.
Okay.
But yes, just come over, we'll, we'll remove it anyway.
No problem, no, thank you.
Sorry about that.
And thank you. And I wanted to be clear that on that metal, uh, from the start of his house, there's two neighbors. I think it's Siegel and one is the LLC, C by Siegel. They had the same metal coming out into Hager Road, coming out into that private road, like called a private road. And it's the same situation. And, you know. You know, like I said, I take a generally approach to things. And, you know, Marty wanted to park my house, you know, and I had trees fall out, trees all over. And all town supervisors came up and said, well, you have to make trees there, it's, you know, and park nature to care of that, you know? And we have those two neighbors, Siegel, that wanted to clarify, and the LLC, that they have the metal and they put cobblestones and they put trees, you know, which narrows it. And you can see their monuments, and then you can see trees that they put on their property.
And did we send Kenny down there to take a look at it?
I'll send Kenny down.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask.
I'm going to be here till tomorrow, but I have to leave probably around twelve noon, uh, you know.
Because I'll send him to look at the landing as well.
You know, and.
So can, can lose superintendent highways? This is more of a town issue, not, not part of this application?
All right, I'm not talking about, I didn't prepare to talk about anything because I try to be very friendly with the neighbors and, you know, I probably go through stuff and ask them, I've talked to Marty and, you know, I don't, you, you know, because when I first came here, it was a hornet's nest. Okay? You had two unbuildable lots that became buildable. And, you know, I don't want to go into that. And I couldn't even stay here for decades because it became that first. It's, I came here for tranquility.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. We just have, we do have.
I'm glad somebody else had.
We got a full agenda tonight. We do have.
Because, you know, um.
Okay. So Meg, thank you for talking to Ken about that.
Yes.
Would anyone else in the office like to say something? In the office, in the room? Have anyone on Zoom?
Virtual office.
Anyone on Zoom have any comments? All right, so what do you guys think? I'm, 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 there's two things that are really, actually, you know, I would want to hear Julie and Matt's comments on this.
Yeah.
Since we're still in the public hearing, in a way.
The notes I had down were just the same thing about the fact that couldn't they just fix the existing deck? That's what I had down in my notes when I was there, rather than trying to expand out.
Yeah.
And then the only thing that was similar to me was I, I did wonder, I guess, they're not, they're not required to, but I guess if they were doing all this work, and they are close to the water, they could have put an IA. I just had a note like.
Yeah, but I think CAC, I agree, CAC is where CAC sets an IA sanitary system. They're not expanding the house, they're not required, and that's noted in the letter denial.
Yeah. And then this, the slope, it, I mean, it is very observant. I mean, you do notice it, the slope going down and.
Yeah.
We both had commented.
I mean, almost the entire property's within seventy-five foot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the problem. It's, it's, everything is in there.
Yeah. So my big, two biggest issues are the hundred-square-foot limitation that we've enforced on numerous other people.
I was going to say the property sort of reminds me of Carpe, even look, so.
And then the second is, is parking, off, off-street parking. So would you be willing to examine both those two items or some of the other comments that we heard tonight? And come back with, to us next month with some changes? And I'll keep the, this public hearing open?
Sure, so with regard to the off-street parking, we've got the spaces in front of the garage, which is sufficient for us. And then we have the ability to open that gate for people to park on the grass if we were to have extra people. So we can avoid ever parking in front of, in front of the house, like parallel to the street.
So there is, there is a large gate that I actually opened to walk in.
Yeah.
You open it yourself.
Okay, so the old, the old gate is still there.
Yeah, there's a picture of it.
You can specifically.
Picture number three.
Okay.
So, and that, we were fully expecting, because of the drawing, we were fully expecting to see some sort of gravel or something in there, and that's all been removed.
Okay.
So, and also, when it comes, you look at picture number five, Ian? You see the car there over to the right?
Yeah, okay.
I parked right on the other side of that with my pickup truck. Now, it's not a full-size, it's a mid-size, but, and very frankly, it was, it was, I had to be delicate backing out because of the way the other side of the road curves in. There was somebody's house sign and a few, like a light or whatever, that I had to be very careful not to back into. So it is tight because that road does narrow right there. But my vehicle was off of the road.
Okay.
On their, in their little driveway.
Yeah.
Getting out, you just have to be careful. And I understand what this gentleman said about over the years, people probably have encroached on it. So I'm less concerned about the parking than I am about just making, you know, adding new things within the seventy-five-foot buffer.
Yeah, yeah. So, but then I will state, would you please, if you're willing to, we'll keep the public hearing open, come back to us. There's some modifications that pick up some of the comments you've heard and that try to really retain everything to no more than a hundred-square-foot exemption, which we can approve. If it goes beyond a hundred square foot, we're not really able to do that. And the interim, I'll go talk to the building inspector about the CO history.
So just to clarify, there's a lot of existing debt that's just there now. So are you saying that all decks should be reduced to a hundred square feet?
No, no, new, just a new, which was built since two thousand and one.
Oh, I see.
And the, and the, the building department indicated that constituted a nine-point-two by twelve-point-two deck.
Right.
Which adds, that's the hundred square feet right there.
I see.
I'm less concerned about the AC compressors, as we said, because we can approve that.
Okay.
It's in the adjacent regulated area. It's just what's in that zero to seventy-five. The additions since two thousand and one in the zero to seventy-five, we have to limit that to a hundred square feet.
Okay.
We can do that?
Okay, great. So I make a motion to adjourn the English Verge Wetlands application of Sitz Hager Road.
Second.
Second, I have all in favor? Thank you very much.
And I'll say, any of the, we already closed it. Anything that we just received should be put up on the website.
Yeah, we, we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay. So that closes our business meeting. And moves on to the work session. On current applications, we have the Bloom Minor Subdivision. They have until July eleventh of twenty twenty-four to submit the final application. I know they are working through the Health Department. They have a new IA system installation lined up. And I presume that means a new well, because I don't know if they were able to get a link to the Westneck Water Authority. So, but they're at least moving ahead, which just makes me happy. We have SH twenty-nine Westneck LLC. I see Karen Hoag is still on. Karen, how, how is the county making out with the recording of deeds?
Sure, there, we have received approval to have the Declaration of Covenants recorded, and we're just waiting for final sign-off from the Health Department. Everything has been submitted, so I'm hoping it's just another couple of days.
Okay, so the, the application goes until April fifteenth? It sounds like you'll probably be within that date?
I'm, I'm hoping, if not, I'll submit a request for an extension to the May meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. And then while you're on White Roadway, I got the email this morning that the Hammer Set the Monuments, and Joe is going to go look at it before the May meeting. So hopefully, I think that was the only open item on that, and so that means they are done with Joe's acknowledgement.
That's correct.
And they have again to April fifteenth, but we'll wait on Joe's comments before asking for an extension.
Okay.
Sixty and Lord Road LLC and Three Borough Hall Lane LLC Lot Line Adjustment. Waiting on proof of filing, they have it to July eleventh. We just closed the Elliot Bowesman Lot Line Adjustment at ten A South Midway Road and Eight Joy Drive. Why don't we discuss it quickly, or is everyone just okay with, with moving ahead on that?
Yeah, it was pretty straightforward.
David?
Yeah. Yeah. So Beth, I guess we need a resolution for that?
Do we need to vote on it first?
No, we, we'll put a resolution together, we'll look at it.
Yeah.
Um, that's, yeah, no, I can prepare. If the board wants to discuss, is there anything issues or anything you want me to put in it or just the standard?
I think just the standard, I mean, this, for all intents and purposes, transpired a long time ago. We're just cleaning up paperwork on it. One quick question, they're going to need, they're going to need a secret review or a statement from us to go to the Health Department on this? Is that, is that a question?
Uh, this is a lot line modification, which is a type-two.
Yes. Oh, so the Health Department will require it, right?
They shouldn't require anything, it's a type-two.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
If, if, if the Health Department does require something, the applicant can just fill out a short form. The, the Health Department has their own short environmental assessment form. And they would handle the environmental review internally. But the planning board doesn't have to do anything.
Fantastic. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
So we have Radigan Lot Line Adjustment of Five Community Drive and Eight Hills Drive. The way I understand it is the Radigans built a shed or a pool house on the adjoining property. They own both. And you can't have a secondary accessory structure without a primary. So they're doing this lot line adjustment to clean up what they did. Joe, do you want to walk us through your memo that you've put together?
Sure. I think just first to start off, the, the maps that are associated with this application were prepared by Nathan Corwin. At the time when he prepared the maps, he was not associated with the Reiner Group. He is now.
And they brought that to my attention, and, and I mentioned it to everyone.
Okay, just so everyone knows, Nate maintains his office in Riverhead, and he comes into our office to review surveys. So I don't think we would have any issue with, and, and actually, even though it's a small office, the surveying aspect of the Reiner Group is separate from the planning and engineering aspect. So I don't believe that it's, it's really a conflict, especially in something as minor as, as this lot line modification.
And as we discussed, this work done by Nate was done prior to starting with your office. So the survey reflects no issues in the, from the past work.
Right. So anyway, this is a, a pretty straightforward lot line modification. It is to clean up the fact that there's a, a shed was, was instructed on a separate parcel, even though both parcels are essentially in the same ownership. So in order to take care of this, rather than move the shed, they decided to move the lot line. Initially, the, the first map that was submitted was actually a map that would be used to go to the Health Department after the Planning Board approved a lot line modification. So it didn't include all the pertinent information that we look for on a lot line modification map. For example, it didn't have the existing lot lines configuration, didn't have the meets and bounds of the area that's going to be transferred, and it didn't have the meets and bounds of the resultant parcels. They, I, I notified Nate of the issue, and he actually had the map already prepared that we were looking for. I, I think it just got, there's some mix-up into what was submitted. And, you know, the, 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 the second map that was submitted to the board is a lot line, a, a typical lot line adjustment map. Has everything. So the, the properties are located at the intersection basically of Community Drive and Hillside Drive, and are in the zoning district A, which requires minimum lot area of forty thousand square feet. Project sponsors are seeking Planning Board approval to transfer seven thousand and nine square feet from lot one to lot two. And within that seven thousand nine square feet is that existing shed. As a result of the lot line adjustment, lot two will increase in size to fifty thousand three hundred and sixty-seven square feet. And lot one will be reduced. And Lot 1 will be reduced to 40,515 square feet. Think, uh, other than that, the materials that were submitted for the lot line modification are acceptable, and the planning board may consider scheduling a public hearing on this matter.
It seems like an easy one, we can move ahead.
Awesome, so let's set this for next month. Uh, Beth, can I trouble you for public notice, please?
Sure, no problem.
Okay, I'll take care of that one. We do have a new lot line adjustment application. Um, I've just received the paper copy of it today for West Night Creek Cottage Subdivisions. And, um, Joe, if you don't mind, uh, writing a memo for this for next month, uh, would be greatly appreciated.
I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
But just a point of clarification, it's, I, I, I believe it's a minor subdivision, not a lot line adjustment.
Well, I'm sorry, did I just say that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, my apologies, yes, it's a minor subdivision. Again, I just received this and I misread it, so.
Yeah, I'm not on adjustment mode.
Yeah. Been a long day already.
Yes, it has.
I knew what you were talking about.
Thank you. Okay, uh, that takes us past subdivision applications, now on to, uh, wetlands applications.
Waiting on additional information for Sora.
Um, for Tesora, 1 Seagull Road, uh, Matt, you still trying to get some updated information?
Trying to get the updated survey.
Uh, Beagleman Holding, we close, so we can discuss.
I think other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward, given the conversation we had, feedback we had. I think that major issue I had, or only question I had, was covered by Matt. Footprint side, I feel like I had one with the 10-foot, moving, moving the, uh, it's so fancy, so fancy.
This is the one with the coastal.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, which is fine. So I, I think it's all within code and.
Actually, there was one comment that the CAC had, was, uh, Matt's, um, survey shows the proposed dry well under the deck and fully beyond 100-foot setback as opposed to what's on the, the other survey, uh, Minto's work. So I, I think we, we can make that a requirement.
It's a requirement, yeah. Yep. Oh, yeah, I see that.
Um, where's my list of, I don't have a list of things we're supposed to look at.
In the, in a normal, uh.
You have a list?
Normal, normal. I should just have an extra copies of it here.
I cleaned out my things, I'm not sure if I.
So, um, I, this application doesn't, uh, degrade the wetlands. It's clear it doesn't do that. They've already added an IA sanitary system, uh, 255 feet from the, um, wetlands. Um, they're, uh, working, they're adding, um, dry well, stormwater dry well collection. Festering mitigating features, uh, steel fencing. There really are many, um, other options, uh, for relocating the structures. They're working with the, um, uh, existing house, existing pool location, and just refurbishing, sort of, uh, re, re, you know, building everything new.
I, I just found.
Have you find a resolution? Yeah, exactly. I was gonna do the same thing, I was gonna pull up an.
So, yeah, the proposed action and location will not create risk of impairing the function and value of the wetlands and buffer. I think we're, we're good with that.
Yep.
The proposed project will not diminish any wetlands in size using the approving authority, uh, unless the approving authority finds out the proposed activity is water dependent and requires access to the wetlands as a central element of its basic function. It will result in the minimum possible alteration or impairment of wetland. That's a non-issue.
Non-issue, I suppose.
The proposed project will not have a negative, will not have a negative impact on the quality and quantity of the groundwater. Uh, no. Um, one thing we didn't talk about is the area, how, how the water tables there. People struggling with water, because in other people, we have other projects, we've asked for a slower.
Oh, slower pump, yeah.
Um.
All right.
Just to ask, no, is that, Meg, what's your experience with that area? Saltwater intrusion, or they have pretty good water on, on Little Ram? I know the other side of the street struggles going down Little Ram.
Um, I think that part's kind of okay, um.
About it, uh, I'm a quote cover, and that's saltwater infection, but they didn't talk about pumps.
Is that something you wanna request, or you think it's okay?
I think we should file a request.
Maybe consistent.
The only reason I would request it, and if there's deep, and deep aquifer, and there's not a problem, I wouldn't have an issue with the standard pump. But because it's, there's a lot of problem just across the street and going down Little Ram, I think it's worth requesting that.
Agreed.
Uh, the proposed project will not recreate a net increase in the risk of runoff. That is true, they're collecting the stormwater. The applicant has demonstrated there are no practical alternatives, which allow the project to be constructed outside the regulated area. Practical alternatives are presumed to be available unless the applicant clearly demonstrates otherwise. In making this determination, note that the planning board generally finds that conducting the proposed regulated, regulated activity on the side of, or landward side of the house is highly preferred to conducting it within the regulated area. And they're really not pushing much in, further into the regulated, the adjacent regulated area. Uh, and they're pinned by their existing construction.
Yeah. It's, it's the same footprint.
Yes. So, um, Beth, do you mind writing a resolution on this one?
Sure, no problem.
And so the conditions would, additional conditions would be the erosion control fencing being held 10-foot from the top of the bluff, and the five gallons per minute pump. As we've asked, you can cut and paste that from other applications.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, we have a couple new wetlands applications, one for Charles Dun, Dun?
I'm not sure.
18 and 20 Tuttle Drive.
Tuttle Drive, yeah.
Uh, David, you looked at that?
Yeah, Marcus, yeah, Marcus and I went and took a look at it, uh, today. Uh, and it's apparently, I mean, they're basically doing a full reconstruction in this, on this, uh, space, but the actual water, the, the part that is related to wetlands is very minimal, unanimous. Because most of it's outside of, outside of it, I can't remember now, get the.
So they're ripping down the building and moving it out?
Yes, out of, yeah, yeah, exactly. So it's, they're moving it way forward, away from the wetlands, which is great, because, you know.
Fairly big piece of property.
Yeah, yeah, so it has a lot, there's a lot, much space, they're doing that, so they're actually freeing up a lot of the wetland, which is great. Um, I think, but, I think there's no reason not to go to a, you know, a public hearing on this, go, go through it all. But the direction is, was all the right direction. There was no, everything was, was moving things out of, and putting in IA and doing it. So they, they seem to have the right direction on everything. Obviously, we'll discover more when we go through the public hearing, but I'd, I'd recommend highly we, we do that.
Joe, you wrote a memo on this?
Yeah, I just got that.
Uh, can I ask you a very, we're running out of, it's getting late. Can I ask you to very succinctly go through some of the key points?
Sure, and I, I'm just going to, uh, basically repeat what's already been said. Um, there's, the site has an, it has an existing two-story residence. And the residence, it also has a, a, a 1,500, a 1,530 square foot terrace, two-story frame garage, concrete patio, concrete walks, and 103-foot-long wood dock. Uh, there's also a gravel driveway. Portions of the house, the existing house terrace, concrete walks, and the entire concrete patio are located within the 75-foot vegetated buffer. Total is 100, uh, 1,111 square feet. Or the adjacent regulated area, 1,682 square feet. The applicants are seeking to demolish all of the existing site improvements, with the exception of the stone wall along front, waterfront to the dock, and construct a new dwelling. Um, that's 5,998 square feet on all floors, and a 6,065 square foot deck and patio. Uh, there'll be a detached two-story garage and a new pea gravel driving area. All of the proposed improvements are located landward of the 75-foot vegetated buffer. Reducing coverage in the vegetated buffer by 1,111 square feet. The portions of the pool spa patio totaling 1,434 square feet are located in the adjacent regulated area. But when you compare what the existing conditions are, uh, the proposal results in a decrease in coverage of 248 square feet in the adjacent regulated area. So, uh, this, this is the type of redevelopment of a site that should be, um, welcome. At the time, the application does indicate that approximately 12,000 square feet of vegetation will be cleared or removed.
That's true.
Photos, uh, submitted and aerial photos of the site, most of the vegetation removed will be turf grass. The application does not include a revegetation plan. Planning board will have to determine if one is needed.
We want that, yeah.
All right, great. So I think we're ready to, uh, take your advice and hold the public hearing on this. So Beth, can I trouble you for a, a public notice for the Dunn property? Please? Okay. Um, the last wetlands application that we just received, this is for Ward's Point Holding LLC. It's Free Shorwood Court, uh, just for full transparency, I met with Mr. Gladstone when he was, um, looking to purchase the property. I've done no work for him since. I don't think there's any conflict on my being, uh, on this application. This one's a little different, and again, I think it comes up against the, um, 100-square-foot exemption. It's not part of a dock. It's stairway and walkway, not part of the dock. They wanted to build a 100-square-foot deck on top of the bluff, and then stairs going down. My calculations of the stair, um, square footage brought it to 87 or 88 square feet. And, um, I'm thinking that, um, we may have to just ask for that even before, if they wanna modify before we have the public hearing. Otherwise, they're gonna end up having a public hearing and then extending it. So, you know, and I don't, do you wanna, you wanna hold the public hearing? Do you want, and then, uh, at the same time notify them that we're gonna limit it to 100 square feet? Which case, we don't really need it, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a, um, public hearing, because, because it's just using their exemption. But we don't really have the authority to accept, accept this application.
Yeah, how did you get, have we done, has, has?
Joe has done a memo.
Find it acceptable?
Which is very, very good, but again, I don't, um, 4-foot-wide by 9.4 section of stairs is 37.6 square feet. A 3-by-12, then 12-square-foot for the mid-platform. And then again, another 37.6, that totals 87.2. Um, you know, they can use a little bit more on the top, or a little bit more on the bottom, but they, I don't see how we could even permit the 100-square-foot platform on top.
No.
Yeah.
So Beth, what is your advice on this, if you're, if you're still with us? Um, where this application is asking for something that we can't offer?
Right, I, I think it makes more sense for the board. If it's a situation where somebody's asking for something that the board doesn't have jurisdiction to give, that you ask them to either redesign the project, or, you know, you, you don't, you don't, I wouldn't schedule a public hearing at this point. I would give them the opportunity to redesign the project, letting them know that, you know, you can't, they, the board can't offer, you know, expansion in the vegetative buffer beyond whatever the extension is, you know, beyond the, um, exception. And so, and if they fall within the exception, they don't even, I don't, they don't even, yeah, do they even need to come to the?
No, they, they would submit it to the.
Yeah.
Well, then, then it'd be just like the.
It would just be a regular.
Big Ram, it comes to us for then interpretation of use, uh, of that 100 square feet.
Just a document.
Just a document. So the application would already be complete for that in that regard, so. All right, let me reach out to Costello on this one.
Seems like the right answer.
Is that West Neck Bay?
I don't know how it's in West Neck Bay.
Cause it's Shelter Island Sound on one side.
Yeah.
That's not West Neck Bay.
Um, two little bits of other business. Uh, one, at the beginning of the meeting, uh, the town board hasn't spoke about the 100-square-foot exemption process. So, uh, right now, we're gonna remain narrowly focused on just the 100-square-foot use. Not location, not materials, just the use. Um, and then this morning, uh, I met with, uh, as the chair of the planning board, met with Howard, uh, Meg, and Al, Stephen, and Reed. A, a little subcommittee who was looking at rewriting or modifying the wetlands code. Uh, Stephen, Kylie brought in, um, Marty Shay from Southampton, and had presented us the Southampton Town Code as a potential replacement, complete replacement. But I think after talking to Marty, who actually thought our, um, wetlands code had good bones, good structure to it. Uh, and understanding that the Southampton Code is really here around a, a, a project delivery such that Southampton has, where they have a Marty Shay who does their full administrative process, and there were 30 years. The code's basically written around his involvement. We don't have that. And so I think the, our little subcommittee decided to improve on, on, um, the existing code. And so we're, we're open to have the next couple of weeks, uh, a draft. We'll certainly have you guys, after we look at it, have you guys look at it.
It's great.
Um, so that's all I have, anything you guys have? Anyone in Zoom have anything? If not, uh, thank you all, I will make a motion to close the April 9th, uh, planning board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.